Into order and start with roll call.
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Mars.
Here.
Mr. Shimp, Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt, Mrs. Juon.
Here. We have an agenda, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
No, we need a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Okay, you're gonna second it. Okay, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific, so we have Waste Management Services on our agenda for today. So with that, Steve, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, council members. I'm gonna try to, I've got a lot of, I think, information to present, trying to present, not only a little bit about the people and what we do, but a little bit, some of the things that I've looked at in terms of the budget process. So with that, I'm gonna kinda start, I probably, I know Sharon, you don't wanna read everything, but I will probably read this part. Our mission of the Waste Management Service Department is to properly operate and maintain the collection system, infrastructure, transporting and treating wastewater without disruption or overflows while meeting the needs of Waterloo citizens, protecting surface and groundwater resources, and complying with all federal and state regulations. So what do we really do? Well, it all starts at everybody's home, everything that we do. As we receive the wastewater from everybody's home, and most of that starts right here, from the time they flush the toilet. At that point, what we're doing is then processing everybody's waste from their home to the Cedar River. We're kind of like a middleman, I call it, 'cause once it gets to the treatment plant, we do one of two things, essentially. We end up sending the liquids to the river, and we take the biosolids to farm fields. We process and take it there. And when we're doing everything, hopefully, we keep all the recreational people using the Cedar River happy. So our goal is essentially the stuff we do, we're almost a department that's better when you don't know anything about it. Typically, when something happens, we don't hear about it. When everybody's stools are flushing, they have no problems, we're not heard. So we're kinda that silent, resilient partner, but our goal is to be petitioned, positioned so that when we do need to respond, we're doing it quickly and professionally. So what does all this mean? What we're trying to do is meet the requirements of the consent decree and avoiding fines, have a sewer cleaning program in place that minimizes backups, provide treatment, and always meet the final affluent regulations. So here's some of the things we accomplished, the major things that I believe we accomplished in 2017. We did meet all the required consent decree deadlines and required submittals, which included the master plan, the final condition assessment, the final capacity assessment. We completed CIPP, that's like cured-in-place pipe projects for what we called Phase 3A. In total, we lined almost 23,000 feet of sewer and rehabbed over 478 manholes. One of the big fines that, that we were continually looking for these, but we did have a big fine where we had an eight-inch storm sewer connection that, when there was water in the storm sewer, it was flowing water directly into the airline lift station, airline highway lift station. This slide I did present to you, but I've had to make a change. When I presented it last, we had no sanitary sewer overflows, the very next day, we had one. So for a total, this was when I did the consent decree update back in December, we did have one sanitary sewer overflow in calendar year 2017. Overall, we TV'd and cleaned approximately 78 miles of sanitary sewers. Probably for the first time in probably 30 to 50-plus years, we started cleaning the larger sanitary sewer lines, 18-inch and above. And for those of you who are kind of in the downtown area, you might have seen trucks sitting here forever, 'cause some of these pipes, you know, if you're 18 inches, you've got six inches of debris that's built up for a long time. So we did complete the environmental beneficial, essentially it's completed, there's a few things the contractor's still gotta finalize or he might be done now. The environmental beneficial, permeable paving project, that's the one on between Fifth and Sixth, behind the brown bottle. There's a, the east half has some permeable pavement or blocks that allow water to flow through. One of the bigger operating things we were able to accomplish this year, we evaluated another polymer from another polymer supplier, and we are expecting to save $60,000 annually with this polymer. We purchased and received training on a phase contrast microscope, which utilizes and analyzes the microbiological organisms for plant control, and we're having difficulties similar to what we had last year with a certain filament count, and this has been proving very helpful as we try to properly control that and maintain compliance. This is really done essentially through Purple, through Public Works, but the city started using Purple Wave. We sold several pieces of old equipment and TV cameras, and to date, I think we've got $54,000 out of that, $43,000 out of some old cameras that were sitting around collecting dust, and a little over $10,000 over an old truck. Actually, we did have another truck as well, so. We, we were able to clean our digester number six, and as part of that, we redid the roof insulation. This is littler things, removed some tri-shracks at cattle congress and lift station that were causing us some operational issues. We completed some needed improvements similarly at Hawkeye Lift Station. This is actually through engineering, we've gotten through, through time, a lot of calls in the 900 block of ash. Essentially, there was kind of ponding water there, and every time there'd be some kind of a rain, we'd have to go out with our back truck and kinda clean the water up so it wouldn't continue there to sit. And when we did this enough times, basically, when you cost out the manpower and equipment, it was costing us $80,000, had we been, had you been charging that out. The good thing is, the city engineering for somewhere around $50,000 put in a permanent solution. So this, to me, has been a big win, win for the city. So when you take a look at our budget, we are enterprise-funded. Roughly 92% of that comes out of the sanitary sewer fund, and a little over 8% comes out of the storm sewer fund. So this is the breakdown of this, this is the baseline numbers that we started from, a little over 7.6 in the sanitary and 671,000 in the storm, which totaled a little over $8.3 million for our total operating budget. So if we take a look at the sanitary sewer, how's that broken up? 42% of that is in salaries, 28, 29.8 in contracted services, the commodities portion is 15.5, and the capital outlays 12.6. Storm sewer budget is totally different. It's 93.4% people. Now, there's only seven people here, but it's largely, this budget is largely just people. So when we put these two budgets together, here's kind of the similar, some of those numbers you've seen in the yellow chart below, where we've taken those, where you can see the sanitary's 92, the storm is eight. And in total, these budgets are the 8.3, and then the total breakdown, and we break the salaries, contracted service, commodities in that far-right column. So, and again, this is just kinda summarizing the stuff that I previously presented. The storm sewer budget, at this point, I'm going to just spend a little bit of time on the storm sewer budget. I have been, Brian Rath, who's in the audience, and I took a look at this and discovered, we think, the goal here was to actually reduce about $17,000 to meet 2.5%. What we have been able to do, and that'd be double that for 5%, with this being 93.4% wages and salaries, we were able to reduce $7,000 to only 1%, and that was through fuel expense and basically vehicle replacement parts. If we start going any deeper, then we'll be into people. So that's as far as I would honestly recommend we go with this budget performance center. The rest of the talk is gonna be concentrated on the overall department, but also on the sanitary, the much larger portion. So essentially, from an FTE point of view, we have 44 FTEs in this budget. 35 are what I'm calling city employees, or I should be full-time employees. We have an equivalent of two seasonal FTEs funded from the sanitary sewer fund, and like I mentioned, seven employees funded in the storm sewer fund. So here's the org chart for us, again, with 42 FTE city and two seasonal. I have included in the black square there, that's actually the fog inspector. That position is, is funded, not by my budgets, but is funded by the sanitary sewer, and he works for building maintenance. He does have ties back to, back to our department. We meet with him regularly, talking about mostly, at this point in time, fog, fog issues. Just looking at this, also you can see these, have the employees identified, and the employees in red are the seven that are in the storm sewer. You see two of them in green, those two are scheduled to retire, one in March and one in July. The ones in yellow, I'll just, the one in the, the large column there with most of the red in that, we have an individual who's been on long-term disability, he's been injured for two years, so, and that's coming up, his, we need, officially can replace his position in, in March. We have the CMOM tech position is vacant. We also have, this is an area that's really difficult for us now, we have one known vacancy and at the bottom of the operations on the far-left part of, of this chart, and we have another individual who's been on, had surgery long-term and has just recently announced that he'll be retiring. So we have, out of those six budgeted positions, we're down to four at this point in time. And then again, the one in the plant maintenance staff is scheduled to retire in June, so that's kinda the staffing as we have it. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the fog program. It continues to be a success. This is the pounds of oil and grease, or fats, oil and grease, that basically been removed from the program and taken out to the anaerobic lagoon for processing. So you can see, through time, we've gone all the way from 481, almost 482,000 pounds to over a million and a half pounds of fats, oil and greases that have been removed that were not being discharged into the sanitary sewer system. The other aspect of, of kind of especially this is the footing drain program. This slide is, I did not update it, 'cause I didn't have the updated numbers, but essentially this is the one that was presented in the consent decree, and the numbers are there through September, but officially, that program is over. And from a budget-wise, unless something's happened I'm not aware of, the footing drain program has essentially run its course. Originally with the consent decree, we were to do 15 and 16. Additionally, it did mention eight service areas, 18 and 19, but to date, unless something changes, the footing drain program is essentially defunct. Going on to talking about our people, a little bit about what we do, we have the instrumentation control technicians, that consists of one foreman, three technicians. These people, on the lower right, you'll see, where they were installing what we call some area velocity meters, these are meters that are out in place, help us monitor the flow. At this time, I think we have 11 of those out in the collection system. They're also busy doing all the instrumentation controls at the plant, lift stations, and the anaerobic lagoon. We currently have a, a program under place where we're installing a whole new control system, so they're gonna be really busy learning a lot of new things in the next year. The other area we have is the sewer maintenance crews. We have one foreman, 12, has 12 FTEs. You can read the various things that they do there, but these people are out there cleaning the sewers, performing repairs to manholes, doing the levee maintenance, ditch cleaning, catch basin repairs, and that's the list of things that they do. One of the important parts of the, of our, this is all part of, these, these employees are heavily involved in our, our CMOM, our Capacity Management and Operation Maintenance Program. One of the big things they do is get involved in televising sewers. So with this area, in last year's budget, those of you who are here, I use this slide, basically what this was doing, I was recommending at that time, we add four seasonal employees. Presently, what our crews often do is go out with a, with a single crew, working together in tandem with the, the combination jet truck, cleaning the sewer with a TV on the other, on the other end of that line, watching it. They've been able to do it with two people, but the amount of footage we predicted was about 1,000 feet per day. By adding these four seasonals, now we can start putting two people on the truck, separating them, by doing it separately, we can, we can obtain a lot more cleaning and televising. So what was the rea, okay, why, I'll talk a little bit about why the four seasonals. This, I think, is a very effective program for us in the fact that in the winter months, this time of year, it's difficult to get this equipment out and about. It has, there are days when they get out, they do other things like cleaning the ditches, doing other things, but in extreme weather, it limits the usage. So these seasonals are meant to be there from like April to October, where we can go out and put them in two-man crews, separate the crews, and do a lot more televising and cleaning. So there's other things here with, enables greater amount of work, like I talked about, it's safer operating practices with two, two per truck, and we always put a seasonal employee with a, with a maintenance, with a sewer maintenance person. And essentially, what is in the budget is four seasonals, this was in last year's proposing to continue, four seasonals at the rate that we pay, the seasonal rate, is essentially the equivalent of one full-time employee with benefits. So what did we accomplish with this? In 16, when we didn't have this program using the seasonals, we were able to clean and televise 46 miles of sewer. Last year, we were able to get up to, with the seasonals here, able to 68 miles of sewer. The goal with the CMOM, when we're to clean the sewers every, every five years, we need to get to the goal of cleaning, televising and cleaning the sewers, need to do 75 miles a year. So we still have more to reach and improve on our efficiencies there. So the other part of the, another part of the operation is our, our maintenance mechanics, and these consist of one foreman, six mechanics. They maintain the lift stations, the wastewater treatment plant in the anaerobic lagoon. Essentially, last year at this time, we had 61 lift stations, we added some new ones with the Highway 63 project. We're up to about 63 lift stations, still 37 buildings, 112 motors and 462 pumps that these people are responsible for performing the as-needed and the preventive maintenance on. The other area of the operations we look at is our, I've got it combined in this slide, the plant operations, where we have one foreman, six operators. This area I've also got is the, the lab industrial pre-treatment control that has one foreman and three techs, and they oversee 16 industrial users and perform almost 18,000 yearly tests, analytical tests. So here's one operational change that I'm recommending and have been working on for some time, and this is the breakdown of, of our employees. So if you go clear to the bottom, you'll see the total FTE is 44. Those in yellow that we have highlighted are the seasonals, and on the very far right, it tells whether they're funded in the storm or the sanitary. So you can see, we have 35 full-time city employees in the storm, in the sanitary, and seven in the storm with the two seasonal FTEs, that brings it to 37 and seven. What I'm gonna like to concentrate on here is what I'm proposing, and I introduced this last year, but we, this was, was in my original proposal, but in the certified budget, we didn't get to it, is reducing the amount of operators and the maintenance mechanics and creating a utility worker labor operator position, and with plant operations and maintenance. So this you'll kinda see in my, my proposed FY19 budget, and we'll concentrate on the areas in white, where I would take, recommend taking the four wastewater operators, now take the six wastewater in the column before, reducing that to four, and adding the, the three utility worker labor positions. Similarly, in the maintenance mechanic, take that from six to five. So if you remember, this is, oops, sorry, the chart, this is what we're looking to do, what I'm looking to do, and this is that area of our org chart. When you look at those on the right, we actually have now two vacancies in the operations group, and the third vacancy will occur in the plant maintenance staff in July. And that will, that's where I'm ta, I'm proposing to take two, two operators, one maintenance, and create a utility worker position. I've been in contact with several other wastewater utilities, and this is the way they do it. This is kind of an entry-level position that provides a lot more flexibility, a lot more ma, a lot more capabilities to perform different things, and have these, have this kinda be an entry level where these people learn the plant operations as well as the maintenance of not only the lift stations, but the plant as well. So what does that mean budgetarily? Not, not a ton. So this chart shows the effect of it. The present status, if we keep what we have, so what you have there is the present status, what does that annually cost with, with the benefits? That tells the hourly rates, and essentially, if we make no changes, there's no savings. What I'm proposing is to put it in at the, this is the lowest pay level, the $26.51 that is in the current Waste Management contract level, and with that, and you pay these three at that wage with benefits, we'll save $8,638. An alternate option, which I'm not recommending, would be, there is in the union contract one lower wage level than the $26.51. If we would start this group at that level, we could save almost $15,800. It is minor, but it is some level of budget savings, and again, I feel this will have a great impact on providing flexibility and covering some areas. For instance, we, right now, when we have a shift operator on at the, at the water treat, at the wastewater plant on the weekends, we don't always have, we need to have a grade two operator. This will create a class of the operators that'll be grade two. This group will be working to get their grade one. Very few people we get, when we bring them in, have a level of certification. It'll give them a, a year to basically get that certification, another year to get their grade two. So taking a little bigger look again at the budget, I'm gonna talk about all these things, but what I originally did, between Brian Rath and myself, so we kinda go down these columns, and there's the 2.5% reduction, some of these numbers have changed a little bit between things, but to reach a 2.5% reduction, if you take a look, that's at 190,000 in the sanitary, 16,790 in the storm, a total of 207,700. The 5% is double that. So the initial price that when Brian Rath and I went through the budget, we were able to come up with in the sanitary, 133,150, or 1.7% reduction. I've already showed you the 7.7,000 or 1% reduction in the storm, and that in total would be 140, and it was still at the, when you rounded it to the nearest tenth, 1.7% total budget. With the proposed changes I just talked about, this is the utility worker position, the one I proposed at the 8,600 drop, we would now lower that amount to 141,000, almost 142. It would be 1.9% in the sanitary and an overall 1.8% in the total budget. If one would go with the alternate position, we could add another roughly $8,000, and that would go to two and 1.9%. I'm gonna come back to that, but here's some of the other aspects of the budget that we took a look at. This is our budgeting for chemicals. The very far right one, which I've called good, when we were dealing with the old supplier and the new supplier, this is the projected cost savings, we were a little over 250,000 with the old supplier, the new supplier, we're at 189, saving a projected 67,500. If I add a 10% contingency, overall, I, as I've calculated, we're saving about $60,000. On the very far left, when I, we were looking at this, we're looking at the, at the history of this. So we've been as low as 290,000 in FY15, and last year, we're at 396,000, and we're projected to be at 374. What I'm proposing is to lower this even, mostly be, I don't feel comfortable lowering at the full 60,000 because of the chemicals, because of other things we've incurred, and that breakdown is, one of the big things we've had on the, on the lower right, the not-so-good, is the amount of magnesium hydroxide we've used. You can look in the previous years, 16 and 17, we've only received one load. This year to date, we've used seven loads, we're projected to use 12, and that's what I'm projecting next year. The magnesium hydroxide has proved beneficial because we've had two issues, we've had a low pH, and we've had alkalinity issues, we started to degrade the effectiveness of our microorganisms, and by injecting that, it enables that to have a quick recovery. Long story short with all this over in the very far left, is the breakdown that I'm looking to come up with, recommending 350,000. This is a budget reduction from the current 375 down to 350, or 25,000. Here's another thing, we've semi-started, and this is, I'm kind of anxious, hopefully we can make this fly, converting a lot of the wastewater treatment vehicles to electric or smaller vehicles. These vehicles, we, we have five to six that are used, and primarily, the only use they get is driving around the plant. One of them does have to go out to the anaerobic lagoon. We have the ability to use the gator, which we purchased last year, and I've checked, it's not gonna be quite as nice as the golf cart there, I don't think, but we can actually rent golf carts for around 550 to 600 bucks a year and have those be a plant maintenance vehicle, 'cause they don't really need to leave. I'm also, we're also evaluating, and is proposed, to look at electric trucks to be like that other vehicle to go, they usually go 40 miles, and that's easily enough to go to the anaerobic lagoon and back. So this is one operating change that we're, we're trying to implement, we're kind of in process. The next phase will be getting the golf carts, trying to rent those, and phase out. Now, I will say, the vehicles that we have, every one of the vehicles used by the operators has been handed down one to two times, so it is an older vehicle typically used somewhere else in the city or within the department. So the vehicle budget program that I'm proposing in this budget is, every year, we've had about 130,000. Our department hasn't always been good at, at doing the budget, but this is what I'm looking to do and proposed in this budget. We have, I take one of the admin vehicles that we have, it's been low mileage, it's a truck, and we're looking, this is gonna be a switch, it's difficult to put all this in here, but looking to take that vehicle and take it over to sewer maintenance, that foreman puts, has got a lot of miles on his truck, we'll send his down, and so this is gonna be vehicle swap, and I'm recommending getting an SUV or a smaller vehicle in to replace that and take one of the other, like I said, move it. The big vehicle we're looking at is, one of the workhorses we have is these one-ton dump trucks, looking this year, we're gonna fa, recommending phasing this out over the next three to five years, replacing this truck at $60,000, this is a workhorse. We've got another plant maintenance vehicle, it's an old 2005, and then this is the, the final one for 15,000, is starting with trying to get a good used electric truck to try around the plant. So the next part I'm gonna talk about is the revenue that our budget projects. This is the, you'll see here, the various activities where I've recommended some, some changes. The big one here, I don't know if it pays to talk a whole lot about a lot of these other than the, really, the sewer use fees. That number I'm reco, I'm, just for budgetary purpose recommending, is to go from 12,700 or 12 million to 12.7 million, that's a $700,000 increase. 5% of that is roughly, if, there's been talk to have like a 5% rate increase, that generates 600,000, the other 100,000 comes from, we've redone some stuff with one of the industrial users, and that's gonna generate another 100,000 this year. So the 600,000 with a 5% of 12 man and the other 100. And realize, this is, is really, this is expected fee increase, isn't it, really cover, it isn't covering the stuff that we're doing, it's covering all the proposed projects between the consent decree and the, the ongoing needs at the wastewater plant.
So we still need to talk about that 5% though at some point.
Absolutely. This is, this is, from my point of view, this is just me trying to give a picture of what, what we might, what things might look at. This is not a decision I'm making, this is more of a finance decision.
All right.
So when we take a look at, at, at the budget, with all those revenues, there's roughly 12.6 million dollars in the current revenues. Our current expenses are 7.6, or rough 60.5% of that. The, the remainder is what I'm calling other, 39.5%. That does cover, there are some fund transfers, if you remember in the slide with the black and the thing, the fog program, there is money from the sewer fund covering, that employee works in building inspections, there are other transfers, but the majority of this is to, other revenue goes to cover the capital improvement projects that are being made in the sewer fund. So here's a list of the various changes when I came up with my 133,000. You'll notice that, I don't know that with time, I wanna get into a lot of these, there are some, I'm recommending some increases, because we know that those are gonna be the case. I don't know, I don't, probably the one here that was a slam dunk is the 1522 lights and bulbs. This is an annual expense that we have to, every, two out of every four years, we have to change the lights in the, our UV disinfection. We changed them last year, we changed them this year, we don't need to change them next year, so that was an easy one to take the 60,000 out of. But nonetheless, what we've done is gone through and identified 133,000 that we think, I think, is legitimate things that we can do within the current budget in terms of an overall general reduction mode, and that's 1.7, not the 2.5 desire. Taking that a step further, now we're gonna go back to my proposed utility operational changes, creating the utility worker. I am looking to do that, and I'm recommending the proposed, or the 8,600, that will take it, like I said, to the 1.9%. Okay, now, other adjustments, as, as I was working and finalizing this with Michelle, on the revenue side, we believe that the sales tax collected's gonna be 25,000 more on the revenue side. Similarly, we have to put that into the expense side. So there's a 25,000. So if we look at the very far right column, that I've a 25,000. So, if we look at the very far right column, uh, that I've got there, I'm starting out with that 133 or the 1.7 decrease. When I add this 25,000 back in, which is prob- a real expense, that de- reduction now goes to 1.4%. The utilities, these next three, I'm gonna talk about individually, but I'll go through quickly, recommending a 90,000 increase in that. Now, that takes that reduction down to a total of 18,000, down to a, just a 2%, a .2% decrease. We have a lot of project engineering costs that are out there, that's increasing by the numbers I've got, 240, almost 242,000. Now, that takes re- reduction all the way to 2.9%. And when I add the capital projects, um, adding going, adding another 64,000, that takes it to 3.8%. And I just finished this slide yesterday and somehow you know how the numbers change. From submitting this yesterday and getting it today, Michelle and I get a number from engineering, says that 322,000 probably should be 640,000. And then, well, I'll, I'll talk about that here as we go on. Let's take a look at the utility bills. Basically, we have, we pay for utility bills at the plant and, um, this upper left-hand chart shows basically what's been actually spent over the, since FY14. 70% of all this, the average has been electric, 30% has been gas, and you can see the percent electric has continued to increase. That 70% is in the middle, but from 14 to current, last year, it's gone from 65 to 74% of our total utility bill. Part of the reason is that, is that the average, uh, dollars per kilowatt hour in the lower right has steadily increased and the major increase from that has to do with a peak demand. We get a peak demand for four months in the summer and basically they, they, they have a multiplication factor for the highest 15 minutes out of a 30-day period. So, whatever, like if two pumps or two motors or everything came on for two minutes in that time period, during that 15 minute, we get charged for that roughly for the four months in the, I think it's, it's, I know it ends in August, so four months, about four months from May to August. So, that has continued to rise. So, that, so if we take a look again at the upper left, if we stayed with the base, that's gonna be the 850 or the red line. I am projecting based on what we've had, last year, uh, we spent, I think it was 930,000. Based on what we're seeing here, I'm projecting that we will likely spend 975,000. So, my recommendation was that 90,000 increase or taking that level up to 940,000. So, here's the engineering expenses that we talked about. I have several funds in, in the sanitary sewer budget that have engineering. One of them's this one called 1315. Basically, the budget last year, the proposed level was 98. Actually, the various projects that I've identified that are on the lower left, uh, maintain that at, at a zero increase. Going on to the other engineering, which is the more heavier duty capital projects, those are again are identified in the left. We had 300,000 budgeted this year, which is, makes up the base. Based on these projections and these projects, uh, I'm predicting that we'll need to spend about 542,000. So, uh, that's where that shortfall is included in the budget. The final thing had to do with the, uh, this one is not included in the budget, but a, a series of these projects are what we call state revolving loan fund. This is not in the typical sanitary sewer, it is part of the funds, but we've got a massive bunch of these projects that are definitely consent decree related, identified here. The project numbers in the budget, base budget on the FY19 and 20 are made up and this is how I'm breaking down, and that could go almost from an 840,000 to over 2.2 million in fees to cover the engineering expenses projected for that. Going on to the one final thing that we talked about, when I said, uh, this is basically, in line item 2163, it covers capital projects to be covered by projected sanitary sewer expenses for the city street rehabilitation program. The base budget for this year was a little over 258. The original number we got from engineering was 322.5, and that number, I just got something probably two hours ago, they're now predicting that to be 640,000. So, with what we've got proposed here, the number is only 64,000. So, I've added these things and the 64 back in the budget and that's where we're at at the, what I'm recommending to a 3.8% increase. So, here's other budget options. I don't like to tell you guys this, but if, I, I don't feel we can cut any of the other commodities contracting things. We're now down to having to cut further potential positions. Again, I'm back to this, but I am lo- i- i- am proposing to implement the utility, new utility workers, which actually is gonna be that, I think I gotta transpose, I believe it's 8600, not 83. So, the other positions, if we start, we have to start making cuts, probably the first one I'd look at is to the collection system supervisor position with benefits, that totals somewhere around 110,000. Again, I'm not recommending it. The, the fact is, we've had difficulty filling the position. I do know from my personal experience, when we have had a person in a position, it's been, it's had very, it's been very productive and very good accomplishments achieved. The other aspect of this job, it's, was originally when we were advertising and going, was a potential replacement for the director or my job at eventual retirement. The other, if we take a look at other typical union labor-related positions, I just picked a number, but there, a lot of them are right at 82. A few are less, but a few are more depending on what level of benefits. So, if we eliminate any other positions, that's 82,000. Again, I'm not recommending it. I have concerns with the C-MOM consent degree compliance and concerns in this area with facility maintenance and operational compliance. The other factor is the seasonals. I say add or subtract, you know, one of the options to do some of these would be to eliminate a position, in particular, if we did anything in the sewer maintenance budget, eliminate and add more seasonals when we're more productive in the summertime. That number is roughly 22,000 on an annual basis for an individual for six months. Again, I'm not recommending it, it's been a very cost-effective in maintaining C-MOM compliance. As I wind down here, to meet the goals that we stipulated earlier, that's requirements of the consent decree, avoiding fines, be able to do a sewer cleaning program in place that minimizes backups, provides treatment that always, that's a goal, meet final effluent requirements, does need the manpower and the dollars to cover the cost to meet these goals. Now, back to the impact statements that everybody else has been using. First of all, I've got the, uh, storm sewer one. This is the one that was 93.4% personnel. Uh, again, this is the one that the, the 2.5% was almost 16.8. I have recommended 7,000 or 1% of that, but if we go any further, we're gonna be, start taking money away from required maintenance activities and things we won't be able to get done. And a lot of these can lead to more complaints and, and once in a while, uh, sometimes if we're not maintaining certain aspect, it can relate to insurance claims against the city. If we go to the 5%, uh, now we're dealing with stuff that we have to do that, that gets back to stuff with engineering with our MS4 stormwater permit, which could lead to more enforcement, in my opinion, from DNR and EPA. The next slide has to do with the sanitary sewer. Um, again, besides reducing those identified savings, uh, the, we will, we will need to start reducing preventing maintenance levels, which will lead to, I think, potential SSOs, basement backups, which could lead to fines of up to, that, another typo on my part, that's 200 a day, not 220, if we have a violation. The next step, that if we're gonna get to the 350 or the 5%, I, my recommendation is stop doing the engineering projects, which will create issues with compliance with the commitments, with the consent decree and needed improvements at the wastewater plant. Wrapping it up closely here, what I have done through this budget is showed you where we di- we have been able to demonstrate a 60,000 dollar switch by changing the polymers. The other proposal talks about using more electric, smaller vehicles for the wastewater treatment plant operations. For a final time, I'm gonna talk about creating the utility worker position to improve operational flexibility. The overall budget to decrease is difficult to cover all the needed aspects. And finally, I think rate adjustments will likely be needed to cover the cost of the projects. Oops, went the wrong way, sorry. And finally, this is kind of a summary of the recommendations that I proposed. Going back to the storm sewer, I propose you accept a 1% reduction with the seven-person budget. The sanitary sewer suggests we take the 150, 133,000 of acceptable reductions. I'm sorry, I guess it's here one more time. To approve the utility worker position, saving the 8638, and then approve recommending baseline increases to cover anticipated costs with the, the, uh, sales tax, the utility, engineering. Now, the capital projects, again, based on the discussion of what we got from engineering, may actually have to increase substantially, I think another 320,000. Finally, I think, except eventually finance needs to make some, a recommendation on potential sewer rate increases. The, the caveat that I'm adding, I think this, I think it would be in the city's best benefit to have a sewer rate study conducted. One of the aspects of that that I would recommend also looking at is, we have fees that have been in place for a long time for the, for the pollutants that industrial users, by the pound of BOD, the pound of solids and the pounds of, of total calgon nitrogen. So, I would recommend taking a look. Those numbers, I haven't done a comparison, but my experience in other cities, the numbers we have are extremely low and we really need to take a, a wholehearted look. So, I'm not sure how much time I took, but I thought about 45 minutes and it's about 40.
I have two questions. The first is, of course, the employee question. How many of your employees live in Waterloo?
Majority. Honestly, honestly, I, I honestly don't know.
That's okay. Can you find out?
I can, yeah, I can get it. I don't know.
My second question, I'm not sure if you'll be the one or if Michelle would be the one. Being new, I'm, I'm confused. We take money out of this sewer fund, don't we, quite often for, we transfer it out for other projects? Am I correct in thinking that? We move money from that fund around a little bit?
No, I think there's some confusion about how it's done. Um, we do charge back the sewer fund for work performed by my office, the clerk's office, human resources, those kind of things. The sewer fund, and that's, I think there are some things that can be done about some of the projects he's talking about. We do issue bonds sometimes for sewer projects and the sewer fund has to pay the debt service on those. So, it, it looks like a transfer in the budget, but what it really is, is transferring the money to the debt service fund only to pay the principal and interest on bonds that were used for sewer projects.
Gotcha.
So, it really is still sewer. Um, and we are switching to a new funding stream, the state revolving loan fund for some future sewer projects that will also be another funding stream and expense stream for them, cause those will have principal and interest to be repaid also.
Thank you.
Hey, just curious, your, your Cedar, Cedar Falls doesn't count as Waterloo, right? Okay, I just, as I'm, I'm just looking, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, Steve. Um, just to clarify just what you're saying. So, there, um, your, your capital, is it all in the CIP or not? I mean, I got confused the way you presented it, I got gathered that you expense all your capital in one year, but in, in fact, doesn't it go into the CIP program?
Well, it's, it is a capital improvement, so it is part of the capital improvements program.
Right.
But it's not part of the general GO bonds that are repaid with property taxes. It's, um, we generally pay for some capital improvements directly out of their operations.
Okay.
We also pay for some, in the past, we have issued GO bonds that are repaid with sewer fees. So, those are kind of a subset of the GO bonds, and now we're also going to be using the state revolving loan fund. So, the sewer fund, because it's an enterprise fund, and I know I'm getting into the weeds in accounting, but the sewer fees need to pay for all sewer uses. So, whether we borrow GO bonds or use a state revolving fund or however we pay for it, it needs to be accounted for in the sewer fund and sewer fees need to cover that repayment.
And totally appreciate that.
It's complicated.
But my question was, was, is it part of the CIP that's going to hearing? Would all of the sewer projects be included in that, even if they are going to be paid from a different funding source?
I believe they're listed, you should have.
They're all listed there, right?
Yes, in the sheets that you've been talking about with planning, there should be a section for waste management. Um, quite honestly, because some, we don't do a really good job of including the pieces that are paid for out directly from operations in that CIP. You could, because they are capital improvements, but I'm not sure they're in there. There should be quite a bit listed there for future that we need to determine how much we're gonna do in a year.
Really presented as if it was operating budget and it really is debt service, right?
I mean, here's the-
Some of it is, yes.
These are the SRF projects that Michelle talked about, identified on this slide that I have up.
Yeah.
And then, uh, these are other projects. Again, these are coming more out of the, I don't know, where do you take all these, some of these? I, I know the satellite went well and the fuse of the wing dike, those are, majority of these are capital improvement projects, and I'm not sure about 63, where, what slide is that?
I'm just assuming new bond form and sewer fees pay off the debt service. I totally appreciate that.
Some of them, yes.
Most of them, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not going to really be reflected in the operating budget, other than the debt service?
This one right here that has these projects that we talked about, the slide I've got up now.
Yeah.
These are covered in the operating budget in line item 263, 2163. And these are mostly the engineering rehab projects, the rehab projects in the sewer portion of the street repairs that Eric's doing and they give us this number and-
Well, and we, we've actually switched that to GO bonds the last couple of years because I needed to cover the engineering studies. Studies really aren't eligible for bond funding, so I had to fund those out of operations. And so, we did move some of the sewer recon portions to bond money, repaid with debt, sewer debt service.
Right.
Um, so, that's what I mean. There are some things, some things that we can, will be shifting around.
Okay. And then, my second question, and this is such a minor part of your budget, but I think we were all approached about the FOG, um, program, and the, the gentleman made that, I think, a, a good argument, that he's paying 50 for an inspection, whereas , uh, the aisle that has a much larger kitchen or, I don't even know exactly what kind of businesses generate the, all of these FOG fees. But the thought being, why should a small business pay the same as a larger business? Have you looked at the possibility of not reducing the lower one, but increasing it to larger businesses?
Well, I have had some discussions with Bob, the FOG inspector, and it's kind of a, for starters, when you look at the work and the stuff that he's doing, the 50 dollars that we charge for an annual permit fee, first of all, not that it's that big of an issue, doesn't cover the cost.
Okay.
The, the irony of it and one of the possibilities, it hasn't been included in the revenue here, would be to take the larger ones and charge double the price, but it kinda has a mixed bag. Cause typically, you know, there are a variety of ways that you can do that and the discussion is, because they generate more revenue, they're a bigger restaurant, they're whatever, how do you decide all that? And the simplistic form was to get everybody at 50. The other part of it could be, that if you wanted to break it down, could be an interceptor or a grease trap. Now, a grease trap is something that's inside the building, tucked in somewhere, or the interceptor's typically a larger vessel outside the building, which is the preferred methodology. So, the other choice would be to take the interceptors and charge them more because they're larger. But from a time point of view and everything, it's actually quicker to inspect an interceptor outside the building than it is to possibly try to look at the grease trap, which is underneath something, which has something covered.
What, the, the question is, um, are we taking a look at that? We've had discussions, you are talking to Bob, and we're going to come up with some recommendations. That's what the councilwoman wants to know.
Okay, the recommendation I had with Bob would be, right?
The, the recommendation, you didn't bring that or let us know about it, so we were waiting to hear that. So, what recommendation are you, do you have?
Okay, so if you take a look at the inspection fees, and we'll start, and I don't know how my calculator's gonna work, but, um, for the, uh, regular program, the way it is, at 50 dollars and there's roughly 250, uh, um, in the, uh, restaurants that have-
There's a total of 250?
Roughly 250 for round numbers and purpose. So, you take-
Okay.
The current programs generating 250 times 50.
Okay.
So, I don't have a calculator.
That's okay.
The proposal we would take would be to take those current 250 and roughly from Bob's estimate, 100 of those would be grease traps, and those would be times 50, and then the other 150 would be by the 100. And that's what the difference would be. That would be the recommendation in visiting with Bob and trying to keep something moderately simple.
I didn't understand what you said.
Huh?
You said taking 100 of them times the 50 and what was the second part of that?
150 of them times 100 dollars.
Oh, okay, okay.
Steve, uh, you need to get with Michelle and I, and let's get Bob back into the room, so that when we come to council, we have the exact things to make it easily understandable, that they know exactly what is the proposal. So, we need to discuss that, and then bring it to council, uh, with a tangible, concrete proposal, taking in the suggestions that they've made for looking at smaller operations, larger operations. But we need to have something tangible.
That'd be good. And then, my final question to you was, and it, it, great dollar figures information there, but absolutely none of your budget comes from general fund, is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I think probably what you're talking about, Steve, if you do that F O G stuff, is you moving from like twelve thousand five hundred dollars, uh, revenue to additional seventy-five hundred to twenty thousand, something like that, yeah.
Did you do them all?
So, seventy-five hundred dollar increase is what it would amount to, to do that?
Wouldn't be much.
Other questions?
If I may ask, what is the timeframe you would like that brought back?
I'm-
You're leaving on vacation, aren't you?
I am, so next week isn't good for me, but I, I will be back, plan on being back the following Monday.
But we need to talk tomorrow, if you've already gotten the information from Bob, we need to talk tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. Jacobs.
So, uh, Steve, just to clarify, so none of your revenue sewer or stormwater is used for anything else besides your own budget? So, none of that money is used for any other departments in the city, right?
Uh, there's, there's other than that other category.
Other than the charge backs for services provided, so-
Okay.
I'm not sure what else you mean by that, but-
Um, and when you have a vacant position in your department, where, where's, if you don't pay out that money, where do you put that money in your budget?
Frankly, in some cases, we'll just take this year, she doesn't like me to do this, but, uh, sometimes, um, for instance, on the chemical budget that we talked about, we've got eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted. She's expecting some kind of a line item transfer to cover that. If we haven't spent it, then typically, we may use that to cover the cost for the additional chemicals that has changed from when the budget was approved. So, it stays within the budget, anything left over, I mean, that's one item. Another aspect that we've looked at this year, we've got a few engineering projects that we weren't able to cover the cost. And I have tra, recommended transferring some of that money left over from salaries that haven't been spent to cover some of the engineering cost.
So, they go to related projects with the department?
Right, but it all stays within the sewer-
Do they go to sewer fund balance? He, he has to request that maybe transferred.
By the way, did, did you mention we did buy another gator in seventeen?
I'd, the, I guess the word would be another, we bought a gator, yes.
Okay, so I thought we had two.
We did have two, we traded those two in for this one.
I thought we weren't gonna do that. We were gonna trade the two in to get one with a cab on it?
We did trade the two in and got one with a cab on it.
But we found out the two that we had both had cabs on them?
That is true, and-
We still traded those in?
We did, I mean, I was there for a period of time, to my knowledge, those two gators sat in non-use. I'm not sure why, this was before I got there. I don't think the two gators that we had before had been used for multiple years. And, uh, you know, for the record and the minutes, because of that discussion, I did make a mistake by thinking that the ones that we traded didn't have cabs, they did have cabs, and actually, the very next council meeting, Adam read it into the records, I was wrong. The two that we traded in did have cabs, that was my mistake. But they were traded in, but they were two pieces of equipment that weren't being used, and now we have one that we're using.
Was there a vote or something that was taken, where it was denied, or?
It was part of the finance recommendation to purchase the gator.
Was it denied?
I'm sure there was a negative, there was probably wasn't a seven oh vote.
No, no, was it voted down?
I don't think so.
No, it was voted, I wouldn't have, I couldn't have gone forward with it if we had not, had not received a positive vote.
Okay, okay, okay.
I guess I had thought you had pulled that back on that next meeting, you had pulled that re, request back, because the whole reason to get the ga, well, we're getting-
It was for the cab.
The whole reason was to get the cab, but the two we had have cabs on them, so we, you pulled it back the next meeting, that was my recollection of that. And now I see it here, we, we bought, we actually went through and bought a used gator, so.
Yeah, more questions? Anyone else?
I'd just like to take a minute to clarify the record if I could, Mayor. And like I said earlier, that was brought up, you brought it up, that, and I did make the statement at the meeting, that I thought one of the reasons is that this would be better, is because it had a cab, and I didn't think the others. And I had it read into the record at the next financial meeting, that I was in error, the other two gators did have cabs, and it didn't change the purpose. It was just me reiterating my mistake that I made, that I thought the other two didn't have cabs, and they did have cabs, but it didn't change the outcome of purchasing the new one and trading the old two with or without cabs.
So, if I could ask, what would be, would have been the purpose to buy another gator then? If we already had cabs, and that was our whole intent in the first place?
The other two weren't in use, and it was in disrepair and weren't worth anything. I mean, why, why should I keep them around and-
Before, before we go too far about next year, talking about this year's budget or next year's budget, you came back, you made a clarification, the, y, y, you're stating that those were not usable, or they weren't in horrible condition, you traded both in, did you get money for them?
Yeah, we did, about three thousand dollars for the two of them, three to four, I don't know what it was.
And you gotta use one.
And we got a used one in place.
All right, if you find anything, um, to Councilman Jacobs' conversation right now, that is not consistent with that or a discovery, please communicate that and let us know, so, all right. Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I just want to say, Steve, uh, I, I, I have appreciated, uh, your knowledge and, uh, what you have added to, uh, the, uh, position that you're in. And, uh, your, uh, ability to put, um, information out there so it's understandable to us, uh, and hopefully to the public as well, has been something that, uh, I have, uh, really enjoyed. Uh, I appreciate what you and your, uh, staff do. Uh, I commend you for your dedication to your work and your knowledge of your work. Uh, just keep it up, keep it going, and thank you very much for what you guys do, Steve.
Thank you.
This is Joanne.
Yeah, just a quick question, when you're talking about the charge backs, are any of those charge backs to other city departments? I mean, are they charge backs to you, Michelle, for financial assistance to, do we do any of that with the?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, right, there's some that goes to clerk's office, or some that goes to the garage, because they do repair vehicles, um-
So, a lot of your budget does help support activities and, and services that you get from other city departments?
Correct.
Right?
That's part of that other thirty point five percent of the revenue goes mostly to projects, but-
It's only, yes, the charge backs are six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. There's some to city clerk finance, some to engineering, because they provide flood supervision, I guess they'll call it, and engineering, human resources, central garage, and I T.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schapp.
Steve, it says on here that we should consider having a rate study conducted. Who would, what company would do a rate study for us? What would the cost of that possibly look like? And, and what would the, the study itself look like? And then, it has these abbreviations on here, B O D, T S S, T K N, and maybe you said what those were, maybe I missed it, but what does that, what do those stand for?
Okay, um, most any engineering firm will do a rate study. You typically put out a R F P and find the one you think has the most experience related to what you're looking for. But again, the B O D is called biologic, biological oxygenation demand. It's a, it's a parameter pollutant ma, used to measure the strength of the organic waste. T S S is for total suspended solids. It has, it has to do with measuring the amount of solids essentially. And T K N is for total kelgall nitrogen, it's the major form of organic nitrogen. And typically, those are the parameters that, uh, other cities use to measure it. And you usually, when you do the rate study, looking at those, you take a look at the components of your plant, you say, how much of it is used for B O D removal? So, you get charge back, so users are paying for the share that they're generating for the B O D. Same with T S S, same with ammonia, or T K N in this case, another form of nitrogen. And it's probably gonna be more relevant as we start looking at the nutrient reduction, the implications of the nutrient reduction study, and we have to start putting things in to remove nitrogen, the, the nutrients, nitrogen being one of those. And, uh, the other thing that we're gonna talk about a little bit in a couple of weeks, has to do with a regional, regional plant. That will also probably be another time to take a look at the way the rates are, so we know that people essentially are paying for, I mean, essentially, the stuff that we're doing, a part of our budget, the sanitary sewer covers the collection system and the treatment plant, so we'll probably, that's something we've had talks with them. We, we may need to eventually break that out into two performance center. The, the collection or the operations part of the collection system and the treatment plant, and separate those costs. Now, they are one.
So, those, those initials or acronyms under where you have the information are related to things that we collect, or things that we treat, and seeing, you know, if we're charging enough or too much in those areas. So, that's, that's what you're saying.
They're testing pollutant parameters.
All right, Mr. Schapp.
Now, just, what, what do you think the cost of something like that would be? I don't know.
Boy, I, I'd, I would say it could be anywhere from thirty-five thousand, depending how company made it, up to fifty, I would think.
Okay, all right, Mr. Morrissey.
Well, one final thing, and that is, uh, uh, C triple E up at U N I, uh, has been involved with several different meetings, having to do just specifically with clean energy, sustainable renewable energy, uh, programs, and information gathered from different cities. And, uh, one, one part of that includes methane, uh, capture. And I, I hope that at, at some point, uh, we get involved with that and get involved with it, uh, very rigorously. But the other thing is something that I talked to you about, uh, and that is the biosolids. And, and maybe at some point in time, we could, uh, do something with that down the road. I know it's not now, but maybe down the road. And I know that many times people refer to that as being, um, uh, revenue expense neutral kind of thing. But at the same time, the way I look at it is, right now, we're spending a lot of money on something that we could, uh, at least let it become, uh, revenue neutral or expense neutral. So, thank you very much again for what you do, Steve.
I, I'll just add with the bio, the biogas that you're talking about, the methane that's generated, we are conducting, you know, a study right now, taking a look at the gas generated from the anaerobic lagoon, and seeing if there's something more that we can be doing with it, and, uh, than what we currently are. In addition, we also generate methane in the biogas at the wastewater treatment plant. And that is part of the facility plan, taking a look at that, and there's, there's, there's potential great revenue to come back out of both of those forms of, of methane or biogas that's generated. In both cases, there is a, a somewhat of a substantial cost investment, but depending how everything's marketed, the payback can be relatively short, as much as anywhere from three to five years. So, payback on the biosolids and stuff that you're looking at, it's something that can be done. For instance, the city of Davenport does it, but they've made a huge capital investment. And, you know, I think if you start looking at, uh, the return on the investment, it, it can be done. I, I would love to do that, but I, I, at this point in time, I think what we've got, why there is an expense to it, the expenses that you'd incur and the capital cost to pay everything back would outweigh, and then you still have to be able to market and get money out of it.
So, we're, we're doing a study to take a look at it. Um, and I just want, for the record, um, I've been asked for, uh, pieces of information from council that I did not have, that I am gaining right now. Um, and that's why I've asked and talked with Michelle, that we extend to five o'clock on Monday for the suggestion. So, I take full responsibility for some of the questions you've had, and I didn't have the information right there. So, we've extended to Monday at five P M. to give you a couple more days when I get the information to you.
I won't be here Monday.
Monday for council suggestions, uh, for, for budget input, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, and Michelle, can I assume that every cost reduction that every department head has discussed and suggested does, has been incorporated already into the budget?
To the presentations.
Or not? Like, everything that Steve talked about, has that been incorporated into a budget someplace?
If you look at your, the, but the slides, they're supposed to be in the budget reduction options. They would not be in the base option, but they should be in the budget.
So, what we could get to you then, Mr. Mayor, by Monday, is to say one of our suggestion is to implement everything Steve said for cost reductions. And then, you in turn would come up with a new budget spreadsheet with whatever options you incorporate, right?
Absolutely.
I'm just trying to still understand the process.
Yeah, that is exactly the process.
Any other suggestions you may have, we'll mix them together and come up with something.
Is it, is it, Mr. Mayor, i- is it possible to get the comprehensive, the eighteen eighteen that we are publishing? Is it possible to get, to get all of those documents, so I can, um, kind of go through them over the weekend? Is that, or would those all be exactly?
We shouldn't have them already, Kelly, I don't know.
Got that green booklet you gave us, that green?
No.
No, they, there should be, I'm not sure, we've been using them in the budget meetings, but are they available to council?
So, are they?
What you have on the screen there, or?
But I didn't get any of those, just piece meal.
Let's, let's stay, let's stay on one conversation.
Hold on a second.
Yeah, it is those, that is what I'm talking about.
But, Mr. Schapp, I think you were talking about, like, are you talking about, like, the actual, um, piece of paper that'll get published in the paper that shows the rate and what's allocated where?
No, I'm, so, so, I, well, okay, so each department on here, when we go through, there is, they always have the F Y twenty nineteen budgeted activity. So, if I look at all those, and I look at, um, it's taking a minute here to pull up, if I look at what says the base level, would that be the actual published budget? And when I say published budget, what we're, what we, at, by law, had to advertise?
Not quite.
No, not quite?
Not quite, there's a few, um, the additional items, particularly the general, well, I guess any departments, if they asked for additional expenses that would increase their expense totals, we are including those in what gets published, and it'll show up as an additional use of fund balance to give you flexibility in choosing which ones you want to do before we adopt the final.
Can we, can we see that in advance, Michelle, or not?
Well, we, yeah, Mayor and I'll talk about what we can provide for that.
I'd like to see that, so let's say that, that published one-
For the weekend.
Everybody came in and we voted seven oh on that, for instance, I'd like to see what that actual-
That means.
What, what, what that means, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just F Y I, I don't know if everyone saw it, the League of Cities issued a, a call to action to call your state house, because a bill is coming probably as early as next week that will stop the backfill.
It's a, it's a conversation, and want to decide, so, that, that has, that, that's like right now. Um, so, that's a, that's a conversation they're having. Another one, too, um, is with regards to the A T E, the automatic traffic enforcement as well. So, I reached out to, uh, Chief Treoka, um, and he has a meeting next week. So, uh, the Metro Coalition and League of Cities right now is advocating very hard, uh, to, to fill that backfill. And, and, um, I didn't, I didn't hear that there was going to be the, uh, I don't think it will be until tomorrow or next week where we find out, but what we've seen is, a lot of communities have already set their budgets.
I know.
So, they're done already, or they publish, so, um, and they didn't take into account anything doing with it. I didn't hear a complete, I didn't hear a complete zero percent, I did hear the potential of a third. So, I didn't hear, yeah. So, there's still some more work, some more work to go on, more work to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could just make a comment to my colleagues, and we, and a lot of these budget presentations, which were great, get a lot of reference to our strategic plan that we all voted on and agreed to. Our strategic plan takes the levy rate down to sixteen fifty. So, if you really stay on track of the plan that we all agreed to, our levy rate, this budget should be around seventeen eighteen as a levy rate.
Don't say we all.
So, well, that's, we, well, we're still, you know, putting strategic plan into our different budget recommendations to support this and that. So, we need to be mindful, we need to be mindful of, of that, um-
What would the rate be?
Yeah, so, so-
Of, of what our plan is.
So, uh, two thousand seventeen, uh, was seventeen sixty, and I think if you take, uh, it's a hundred and ten cent to get to sixteen fifty.
It's like twenty-two cents a year.
So, it would be, um- Let's just say thirty, it's, so it'd be seventeen- Let's just say thirty, it's, so it'd be seventeen thirty that we would be looking at for the year, um, also- That was eighteen, we're talking about nineteen. So we have a work session on Monday to talk about the strategic plan. But also within that strategic plan, there's two strategies as well. Um, and one of them deals with, uh, well, both of them actually deal with valuation um, that has an impact on what that levy rate would be, and losing twenty-six million dollars, which is on the way to the two hundred and fifty million of a taxable value we thought we'd increase, also has a fluctuation with that as well, that was outside of our control. So we have a strategic plan meeting coming up, uh, on Monday to get our, uh, new council and our senior council voices, um, heard, but yes, that is, uh, something that's always on the mind. I would accept a motion to adjourn, well, we have one second, all in favor? Aye. Both, thank you.